I see we have a lot of guests here tonight. Welcome to our meeting. We have already begun. We started with an executive session and a study session. We do have agendas at the entry as well as a sign-in sheet. If all of you could take the time to do that, we'd appreciate it. At the end of the meeting, we will have an opportunity for citizens' comments on items not on the agenda. So if there's something that you're here to say that you'd like to approach the dais, we just ask that anyone speaking give their name as well as their address before they start to speak. And so I will remind you of that. If there's something that's missed. There are also some items on the agenda when we have the opportunity for the public hearing. You'll control the public hearings open. And so that's a chance for you to step forward if you have something to say on a specific item that is on the agenda. So with that, we've already called the roll. So we will start with the prayer for guidance and on the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Pastor, for being here.
You're welcome. Let's bow together. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can exercise this liberty to stand before you and to call upon you for your wisdom and direction in this meeting. And we thank you, Father, that, well, that this liberty is based upon the liberty that we have in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, we thank you for Daniel's words as he recognized you as the God of wisdom and might. And we do call upon you for direction for each decision that is made, each discussion. We just leave these things in your hands because we know that you are overall, we know that you are the one who gives wisdom and knowledge. We know that you have set this council in place at this time. And so we know that we can depend on you, we can trust you for your wisdom and direction in this hour. We give you praise in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I believe everyone has had the opportunity to review tonight's agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion.
All right, second.
I believe this is Mr. Slagel, correct? Is that Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any changes, revisions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Oh, here. Yes, here.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
And Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the June 19th, 2023 city council work session. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Ms. Pittenger and Mr. Schwab. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any changes or revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Epstein.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
And Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the minutes of the June 19th, 2023 city council meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes? Anyone?
So.
Thank you. A second? We have a motion and a second. Were there any changes or revisions to the minutes? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Epstein.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
And Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, moving on to presentations, proclamations, and awards. See that we have the swearing-in of three police officers tonight. Chief Atkins, are you going to do the swearing-in of the officers? Or you're up to doing that? Okay. Mayor McFarland will do that. Are we doing these separately then?
No, I'm gonna do them all together.
Okay. So we have Officer Warren Edinson, Officer Colton Linkus, and Officer Jordan Lino.
No, I'll do them all together. You want Bible? Yeah, that's why I was turning back. It's your department. It's a hug effect. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I call the name of the officer.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
and the charter laws, uh, excuse me, the Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
and the charter, laws, and ordinances
And the charter, laws, and ordinances.
of the city of Tip City
Of the city of Tip City.
and will faithfully, honestly, and impartially
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
and in a manner consistent
In a manner consistent.
with the law enforcement code of ethics
With the law enforcement code of ethics.
discharge the duties of
Discharge the duties of
the office of police officer
The office of police officer.
of the city of Tip City
Of the city of Tip City.
in Miami County, Ohio
In Miami County, Ohio.
to which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If you wanted a minute to take photos, I don't know if you have family members here. Chief Atkins, would any of your officers like to have a photo before the dais?
Do you want me back down there? If you don't mind.
I'm just taking photos of the police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. I yield the floor back to you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have no ordinances for second reading. We do have a number of resolutions this evening. We have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Outdoor Enterprise of Tip City, Ohio for the Kyle Park Parking Improvements Project at a cost of $76,449. Could I have a motion to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Egleston?
Yes. This was budgeted in the CIP for $140,000. And again, we did have that cost. Durst Brothers was $89,009.07. Co-construction was $78,009.82. Again, outdoor was $76,449. If you, this will be as you go into Kyle Park. You pass the four-way stop, get over to the ball fields. As soon as you turn right to go around the ball fields, that first corner is where this is going to go. So sixty spots? Sixty-three. Sixty-three spots. And then next year, we will complete the last part of the project. So we're asking council, but a public hearing approved resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Egleston. Are there any council comments on this project? Hearing none, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote? Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
And Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
Resolution 2923. Thank you. Moving on, we have a resolution to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court as part of the 2023 National Fitness Campaign. Could I have a motion to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
A second.
Having said that, Mr. Egleston, do you have any comments?
Yeah, so the council recall, this was proposed in the 2026 year. The goal is meant to get this fully funded this year going with the national campaign. They put $30,000 towards the project. This is $322,500 minus $30,000. Staff supplied the grant for the balance. This also incorporates a number of items. And it includes also what they call a studio slab, which on the other side of the workout equipment, somebody can go out there and hold a class. They can stretch, they can do, if you're running long, they're stopping, take a break. And it also includes local artists. What they'll do is they'll work with a local artist to come up with a theme, and that theme will be on that equipment. And there'll be a description of the artist, what they're, what made them come up with the idea they did, and a little bit also of the donors that put money towards this. If the grant does not come through, this project does not move forward. Okay? That's the deal. The NFC understands that. But there's a few more steps even after this passes. Expect to know whether the funding is in place by somewhere around August 1st. And so again, if we're notified, I don't get the additional money. Then this will be postponed to 2026, and it'll be reduced in scope.
So is the money returned then?
Well, they don't give us anything yet. This is just council saying, yes, we would like to move forward with it. They're saying, if you keep moving forward, we'll give you $30,000. If the grant comes through, then we move the process. I don't recall exactly, but I think there's just another maybe resolution possibly that you have to have. Or obviously you gotta sign a contract. So that will move forward. They would hope that everything would start moving, and this would all be up and running somewhere maybe about November, if not sooner. So if the concrete gets poured, it's got to sit for 30 days before they can do anything with this slab. This also includes a canopy over the equipment a little bit to help with some shade. Somebody suggested, I think it was a good idea eventually, is to get some water over there and get some misters. So only degrees, it's 80, 90 degrees, there's just a little mist there cooling people down. So then this goes on their website as a location, and anybody that uses this equipment, they can go to Fairborn, they can go to Tip City, and a few other cities around Ohio that have this. So it is also a marketing tool to some degree. So again, we're asking council to approve the resolution as presented.
Is there only one grant for the remainder of $322,000?
That's what I'm looking at, is one grant.
There are no other sources that we're going to tap into?
Not at this time. You know, we'll use a little bit from our tip foundation, which is very little, $3,000 to $6,000 we can throw into it. Can I talk with it? If this does fall through, then we can still keep moving forward, maybe just revamp things and redo an agreement with them that, okay, we will try in the spring. But again, anything we do, we don't have to do if we don't have the funding. And that's at least the key to it. We're not committing, you're not committing to, we're gonna do this one way or the other until 2026.
Okay. Are there other council comments or questions?
If we do get the grant, we still do have control over the implementation of it. Where it goes, who the artist is.
Well, the location we picked that they agreed to was along the bike path over by the aquatic center in that area. You have restrooms, you got drinking facilities, you got all those amenities that you should have while you're there. So they said, yeah, we do like that location. So hopefully, it'll also enhance that area because of the aquatic center and some other stuff. So, yeah.
So that's where it's gonna go?
Yes. But I'll also perk up twisting some contractors' arms for some donations. I'll do what I can to save a buck.
Is there anything else you can add? Okay. Hearing no other council comments, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to step forward and speak to this resolution? Hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote on this? Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Resolution 3023. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase six transformers for the electric department from Westco International at a cost not to exceed $105,540. Could I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I will.
A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Egleston, do you have comments?
I'm gonna have Mr. Mack explain it.
Yes, this resolution is for the purchase of six transformers for the Westview, Westview? Well, lots, the apartments on Kena Drive. This will be the first phase. We will need additional transformers in the future. So this is a pass-through cost. The developer will reimburse us for these transformers.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Does anyone from council have any questions or comments?
What's lead time?
The lead time right now on these are 32 weeks, so not too bad.
What's the timeframe on the reimbursement?
They'll pay those fees as part of the development process when they come in for permitting and that sort of thing. They'll put in electric.
So it's not gonna be all at once, they're gonna do it in increments?
This first phase will be at one time. They'll have an upfront payment of these along with some other fees as part of the electric cost, wire and those sorts of things. And then, yeah, this is phase one of multiple phases will be going here on the electric side.
Any other comments or questions from council? I don't hear any. Thank you, Mr. Mack. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak to this resolution? Hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution 3123. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase certain real property located at 1400 West Main Street, State Route 571, Tip City, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $385,000, with the city paying the closing costs. Could I motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Egleston?
Yes, and we talked to council about, the CIC and Council, Mr. Tuss, we talked about similar to West Carrollton, the purchase of strategic properties. When they become available, and again, this property is available, and we all know the condition of that property. The staff did have an appraisal, and it was $420,000. We did give it, again, as you can see, the individual we had negotiating for us got it for $385, plus closing cost, which puts it under that $420,000. I believe we had companion legislation to modify the budget to also include the funding for this purchase. But this will get us started to get that process moving forward. The law director will be the one that helps us close on this, to save those costs. So staff will either look at having a company or the city remove the structure from the site and get it cleaned up. But again, this would go along also with the CIC's proposed plan now in the mode is to redevelop in that area. We will have control. We can make sure that whatever goes on that property is going to be in benefit of the community. So staff, again, is asking the council to forward that purchase after a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Egleston. Does council have any comments or questions related to this resolution?
Where exactly are we at in the process? Like, is there been earnest money and an offer made and the like?
Third party put up $10,000 to seal the deal. Remember, council was not to exceed, we had not exceeded that. Actually, it came a little more than we thought it would be.
The appraisal.
Yes, and they actually got in the building, they looked at everything. So they said, well, it meets the requirements council directed us to do. Initially, it was gonna get past that amount, but negotiations went very well. So it pleased them. We're getting it for still a little less with closing costs, less than what it was really appraised for. The city will hold that property until such time as it gets developed or we find something different. I know we're gonna be talking with the county to find out if the land bank is any use to us with this property. But again, we can hold it and make sure that whatever's going to go in that area is going to benefit redevelopment. So.
The first step.
Yep, it is a first step. It's a strategic piece. But again, I think Mr. Tuss was saying, don't just randomly start going out and buying a lot of stuff, but look at those strategic purchases as opposed to just, you know, going crazy at this point. So that's all I have.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote? Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Enslund?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
And Ms. Pittenger?
Yes.
Resolution 3223. Next, we have ordinances for first reading. The first is an ordinance amending Chapter 37, municipal employment of the codified ordinances of the city of Tip City for all employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement. Could I have a sponsor for this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Next, we have an ordinance amending 2023 appropriations and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. The ordinance amends and modifies the 2023 annual operating budget to appropriate additional monies for various unanticipated events which have occurred during the course of the city's 2023 fiscal year. Could I have a motion to sponsor this? Or I'm sorry, could I have a sponsor for this ordinance? Thank you, Ms. Pittenger. Ms. Egleston, did you want to speak to these as we go? Okay.
Again, this was the companion orders to the purchase of the property. So Mr. Tuss had to make an adjustment in the appropriations. You get the timeline for closing on the property that coincide with the ordinance.
Now, I apologize on that first ordinance that I read. I didn't allow you time to comment. Did you want to go back and comment on that? That wasn't related to that?
I'll wait till next week. That's fine.
No problem. Moving on, we have an ordinance vacating alleyway bounded by inlets 273, 274, 275, 868, and 869. Could I have a sponsor for this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Ms. Egleston, did you have any comments on this?
Mr. Spring?
Yes, this ordinance essentially is a vacation of an alleyway, a legal right-of-way that's at the 30 German Street property that was recently purchased by North Construction, Ben Mosier. Essentially, it's an unused, undet, unimproved section of grass that runs east-west right through the center of his lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spring. Next, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 34, the codified ordinances of the city of Tip City, Ohio. Could I have a sponsor for this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Mr. Egleston?
Yes, this ordinance, and the next three ordinances, we need to obviously go together. They all surround the position of the law director. So if you introduce any one, the next two also should be introduced so they can be a public hearing together at the next meeting.
Next, we have an ordinance modifying Chapter 37 of the codified ordinances of the city of Tip City for employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement to add the position of Director of Law and modifying Section 37.16 to include an exception for the Director of Law. Someone like to sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Mr. Egleston?
Again, this just adds a position into non-bargaining, under Chapter 37.
Next, we have an ordinance updating Chapter 37, Exhibits A of the codified ordinances of the city of Tip City, establishing pay and benefit schedules for all city employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Could I have a sponsor for this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Mr. Egleston?
Yes, if all goes through, this would establish the pay for the Director of Law's position.
Thank you. Moving on to motions. We have a motion approving the Tree Board's 2023 Urban Forestry Management Plan. Could I have a motion to approve?
I will.
A second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Egleston?
Yes, the chair council is required to approve their plans so they can move forward. Again, it's their obligation to look at trees, plant trees, keep a canopy vital in the community, because we have about trees. You have a warm, hot community, and they do provide shade and a home for the ecosystem. So we're asking the council approve that plan. Staff can move forward with the planning for the tree board implementing it.
Thank you. Are there any council comments related to this motion?
I have a quick question. The attachments section on page nine, they took out a comprehensive planning design, the tree risk assessment, the annual work budget, the long-range work plan, and the long-range work budget. Why were those removed from this plan?
I wonder if they mean, so.
They're seen to be important pieces of the overall tree plan.
I think I looked at the implementation. This is a proposed budget for the next five years. Shall we develop that up properly? The proposed planning list for the next five years. Shall they develop consultation with the city staff? Which in essence means that we would approach council over the budget to say, this is what we need to plant trees. So I guess to me, it kind of says, hey, in five years, we're gonna need this many trees. And then staff will say, okay, we can economically take care of this many trees. I think Tony said 30 trees a year is what they can maintain without having to hire somebody to do trees because that is keeping water trimmed. So each year, you add 30 trees. So you can imagine by five years, you've got almost 150 trees you're maintaining. So I can only surmise that. So the comprehensive plan on page nine, comprehensive plan and design, tree risk assessment. They still keep that. assessment, they still do that. I'm not sure this means they're not going to do it more than it's already in their ordinance constantly. Because we still do the budgeting, we still do the work plan.
Is this something we should pay one until we have more information?
And the biggest part of that is the tree risk assessment, because I think it's vital to the community that we're going around inspecting trees to make sure that they're in good shape, that we're removing dangerous, you know, tree. And I'm not saying that they aren't doing it, I just don't know why it's not, why it got struck here and that it's not attached somewhere else.
I think it's still in here, Ryan.
Topical three. They consider the systematic annual tree risk assessment, and then there's seven criteria that's in there.
And Action six is the long-range five-year work plan. I don't know why, maybe they just crossed it out there, but it's still in here. Action five, and annual work plan budget. Three, consider systematic annual tree risk assessment once majority of the inventory and expense completed. So, I just wonder if it's just some list that they took out of there because they're already addressing it in the overall document, because this stuff's still in there from what I can tell. They just crossed it off, so it's still in there. Part of the work, comprehensive article, Action two is comprehensive planning design, so I think maybe it's just something they had, they crossed it out because they already have it in as an action plan. This is all in there, everything they crossed off is still in there. Do it, do it, do it. Yeah, do it, yeah. That makes sense.
Well, does that respond to your questions, or do you need more information that we, is there anyone else also that may need additional information before voting?
I mean, it's in there.
Okay, I agree, it's in there.
Or we can take a few minutes to repeat that.
Yeah, I'm fine, presentable.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has comments or any concerns about the motion that would like to address those to Mr. Eggleston? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Could you call the roll? Ms. Pittinger?
Yes.
Mr. Ensland?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Schwab?
Yes.
Mr. Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor McFarlane?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have some items under miscellaneous, the first being uptown updates. Mr. Eggleston?
Uptown updates, the CIC moved forward with a, hopefully with a plan here to do that redevelopment of that uptown area. We are working a little bit now with the curbed lawn, but we're going to try a little more aggressively to treat the curbed lawn. There's two spots that we used to think had mulch, the dark spots, and we're going to try to filter in some more seating in that area down by the bank. We're still keeping on Mr. Eggleston, and they're trying to maintain the property. He assures me he's been trying to get individuals into their complex. He said he's possibly talking to a grocery store that might be interested, with the caveat that the company wants to know if the city was going to support it. I can't tell you other than, yes, you know, the community would like to have any grocery store. As y'all know, the problem with trying to split off property is the way it's set up in this land trust mortgage. He's had people want to buy the Burger King, but he can't split that off without the consent of all the parties that are part of this, lack of better word, investment for the real estate. He has been trying to do his best to attract other businesses, but it's not tough. At least that's what he told. So, other than that, unless there's really some specific questions other than I can answer, again, moratorium possibly, again, the council will inform with the salt storage, which would be on counter. Until we get to the plan and we get the developers hopefully involved. I think there's some other areas that we need to look at from a staff's perspective, on cleaning up some other planters in the plaza across the street, but we'll keep on that. As far as the bridge painting, the plans will be submitted this week. I will talk to KFZ, and I said, how can I just get my color swatches off, and menards, whatever, or I think what they're going to do for us is come up about four colors, five colors or so that they think would blend in with the brick. And if you notice, this is the sample of the brick that would go in. It's called regimental red. So, they said they would look at at least five, maybe four to five colors, give us a swatch to show beige, this dark red that you've seen before, or the beige and another red. They said normally that top part of the buffer is painted beige, and then steals a different color. She feels that if you really want a red, that paints have come a long ways, and maybe you're not going to see them fade as fast as ODOT thinks they are to where they'll start getting more pinkish. So, I hope by the next meeting I'll have some color swatches for you to look at, but this is the color that the brick comes in.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you bringing that, and I think that that is, we've kind of been put in a position of picking out colors or voting on it, and so having done that and just looked at something on a computer monitor, it's much more realistic to look at something that's a swatch, and knowing that ODOT said, don't do red, makes me think we should open up the discussion too.
Yeah.
So, if they have four or five, I think that sounds good.
And then we can compare them with the brick now, just to see maybe a little bit which could be.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. I guess with the uptown area, that's one day I know we're a little further out on getting the bridge painted, but would be to, you know, continue the discourse and the dialogue and have people from the public who are interested in those improvements be able to come to meetings if we have that as something that we're going to continue to discuss. I wonder if at the plaza though, do we have data from the group that we had paid for some of those analytics? Is there something there that we have that we could provide to encourage development there?
Were you talking about the Cox thing?
Yes, that we had some analytics on retail, and was there enough there that would assist with, if they're asking you about, are people going to support it?
There, we let that contract expire if it was due back in July, so we don't really have anywhere now to draw on those analytics. I think the thought process a little bit was that once the plan's done and the developer gets in there, they will look at the data, they will be the ones going out and attracting individuals to come in there. I think we can try to get with ODOT, just basically on traffic counts, but again, you know, we can't tell a business, you know, community's going to support you. I've heard a number of things that, well, the last one, the prices were more expensive than Kroger, or, well, sometimes independent grocery stores are just a tad more expensive, but whether this company thinks they can make a go of it and the community does support it, I mean, if you're shopping at Kroger now, you need to, if this comes in, really spend your dollars at this grocery store, because if you go by the original owner before the Mexican restaurant, and go where you have food and stuff, that, he said, I'm losing fifty thousand dollars a year. So, that tells you, are the people going to support something if they didn't do it for fifty thousand? Now, if somebody comes in, and hopefully, I think if they can do some interior remodeling and make it look like a branding store, you might attract more people into that store because, I mean, you've got to maintain things, but I can't tell somebody, oh, yeah, the public is going to be there, and you're going to make, make your money.
And I don't know what the result of that, if we had any data to support that, because we weren't with that company very long, but did they give us anything that we could then share to?
When it comes to the independents, we couldn't get a lot of that data. They track the national brands through the cell phones, but to get somebody like this company, you know, it was, it was hard, because even with Dorothy Lane, he said, do you have data that we could share with Dorothy Lane to try to do something? He said, well, we don't really collect that. They did have the traffic counts through the cell phones that you could tell who was going in front of the place, but that wouldn't tell you they were actually shopping at that store. So, I mean, again, with the, we didn't renew that contract, it was thirty-some thousand a year, to say, if we're going in this direction with the CIC, are they going to be the drivers to fill these spaces instead of us? So, again, that contract can always be renewed somewhere down the road if council thinks there's a benefit there.
Well, I don't know whether there is, I just wonder if we have something that we've already gathered, information that could be shared.
I mean, we can tell them just when we found that with all these fifty percent, Pickle and Troy together formed fifty percent of that store's volume. Out of our zip code, not just the city, our zip code, sixty-three percent go to Family Dollar. More or less, five percent of Tipton's zip code goes to Kroger North, fifteen percent go to Kroger South. We didn't find a lot of, usually one to two percent to, again, Dorothy Lane, Trader Joe's, those different types, there wasn't, there wasn't any residents going there. So, it was kind of spread out, but the bigger stores are obviously your chains, Krogers, Walmart, and Meyer, but seems like Kroger had the lion's share of most of the grocery business.
I think from the perspective of attracting people though, one of the things we have to address is the maintenance of the surrounding area, because if someone is thinking that this may be something they want invested, and then they take a look at the overgrown areas, the weeds and things, as a council, I think that we should consider, have staff consider maintaining the public areas, and I know I've said this before, but the curbed lawns, the places where we have easement, if that's not private property, and it would be, I don't think, a significant investment, you could look into that and find out what the costs are on doing that designated area and assuring that the people that are supposed to be following these maintenance codes that we put into effect, that that's actually happening and that we're leaning on the businesses that aren't maintaining their property. Like, I know, getting off of the interstate, driving in, there's just, I mean, during this growing season, it's really disappointing to see that, and I think that's going to have an impact on the development of that, even if it doesn't come down to dollars and cents, people looking at that are not going to be as interested because of that. So, if that's within our control, I think I personally would really encourage you to look at the cost of that and consider doing that.
And again, we, we all know buckhorn, it grows no matter what, and you get those little stems all the way through there, so Mr. Mack and I talked, and he was getting with Mr. Hunt, to say, look, whatever treatment's going on isn't really doing what it needs to be. I walked up and down, and there's still lots of weeds in the curbed lawn, and I said, we're going to do something different, but I said also in front of the bank, I said, there's these two black spots where I think they had mulch before. I said, let's kind of rake those out, get some seed into those things, and see if we can start getting grass into that area. Then I just noticed in the plaza across the way, I was driving through, I thought, their planter looks like a mess. They got little trees growing in there, they got weeds and everything else, so I was like, I think we've got to let them know, look, you need to also, you know, maintain yours, and they have quite a, quite a bit of weeds everywhere, so we're taking a little harder look at it. And we do communicate, Mr. Eggleston, look, you know, we're glad you're doing something, but your planters, the weeds are starting again, there needs to be, you know, more effort here. So, they're also looking at the signs, what are you going to do with the signs? Again, we got multiple signs there, as you know, the Burger King, the church that was in there, and of course, the grocery store that really isn't open, so letters have been going out, and then we sat down with the law director, Mr. Spring and Mr. Carville, and we said, okay, let's get the plan, let's find out what that process is going to be so that no matter what, at least we're doing what we can. We may not get a lot of results if we end up going to court, but let's just keep that process going, so hopefully, I think so far we can get a little compliance, but we're going to keep up on it.
Is that timeline and next step something you can make public so that we can look at that and potentially there's citizens that are interested in knowing what those next steps are?
Most of the time with zoning, you, I mean, I know people think you get instant results, but you don't. You just constantly send a letter, you talk to the guy, you send up follow-up letters, you hope you get a little bit, and I have to admit, a little bit, Mr. Eggleston, if you get enough pressure, he'll come out and do a little bit enough to get you off his back for a while. And remember, the back of the building finally got painted, the truck that was back there finally got moved. It's just something where you just got to keep picking at it, but at some point, and again, council wants to set a timeline, every six months you go to court, but I found all the years that I did that task, eventually I got people to comply because I just knew going to court, it's just something they don't really like to deal with, and try to get somebody find or, you know, thrown in jail takes quite a little bit, but as long as we keep after it, I think at a certain point you got to say, well, we've tried your honor, and that's it. Maybe that's six months, maybe that's a year, but at that point you say, look, it's not, we're not getting anywhere. What can you do to help us? But it's, it's not an easy process, so.
I would just like us to follow. I know we've put in place ordinance regulations for a purpose and just to make sure we're following that process, whatever is outlined there, that we, I would like more communication in terms of, you know, what has been done, where we are in the process, you know, what we expect as far as the timeline, and then again, if there's public areas that we know, you know, we can define what the cost is to get out there and maintain those, even if it's just short-term until there's a change. I think that that's the idea.
We'll do our best.
As the, I'm going to look at, give me on this one, has the health department determined the rotting food inside the grocery store?
I don't think they've inspected it recently, though I can bring it up at the next meeting if we want.
I would. Now, give us more firepower.
That, and then what about the fire inspection? I heard that the fire sprinkler system was not working, and the assistant chief was in communication.
Chief Howard speak, I'm not really too familiar with that.
Over Cameron Howard, over the real cold snap, over the winter, I think it was just over Christmas time, the sprinkler system did break. Assistant chief Relig did go in, perform an inspection, we were able to get the system up and running. It's, it's at compliance level. I'll just leave it at that, it's at compliance level.
So, is compliance level something that the city cannot do anything further?
Correct. It operates as intended. Yes, ma'am?
And is that something that is that building in compliance in a way that someone else could become a tenant there, or is it in compliance with the fact that it's essentially vacant?
It's in compliance that somebody could become an occupant. The fire code doesn't give correlation to whether the vacant, the building is vacant or not. Once a suppression system is installed, it shall be maintained for the life of the building, whether that's occupied or unoccupied.
Okay. And you seem to be hesitant in saying it's compliant, is there hesitation there for a reason?
No, because compliance, remember, that's the minimum standard. There's a lot of improvements that could be made with the facility, so it's at a, that's the most base level of compliance. For example, fire spreading that building would be an absolute concern. The, it's, it was a building that's been added on to over and over, there's multiple systems at various ages, they're passing their tests, but we get the same compliance from the owner that the other city staff does. Mr., the other minister, Eggleston, will be on top of it for a brief amount of time, get things to where it needs to be, and then it fall, quickly falls into another state of repair until you get back in there and find it again. So, when assistant chief Relig was finished, it was in compliance. The hesitation is, I can't tell you right now for a hundred percent fact it remains in compliance, because we can't go there every day, every month to, to re-inspect. We try to get there on an annual basis, or when there's a complaint, or a known break in the system.
So, is this a hazard? Can we qualify that there's a hazard to the community by having this building that's going in and out of compliance?
Any vacant building is a cause for concern because it invites, invites activity that's otherwise not good for the community and the building. Just the fact, even if, you know, you're familiar with your own resident. Just the fact, even if, you know, you're familiar with your own residents, if you leave something vacant for a while, you don't go there for a while, things just aren't kept up the way they're supposed to be. So the fact that that building is not looked at on a daily, regular basis, it's falling into disrepair every, every day that nobody's there to look at it. And there's been sections of the building, not including the grocery store, that have been vacant the whole time that I've been here, to include broken windows in the front, which could easily lead to all kinds of nefarious activity, whether it be fire or law enforcement activities that need to be addressed.
So what, where do we need to be? Do you have an opinion, Mr. Freeman, as to where we would need to be in order to take action if we have a building that's essentially as described by the fire chief in the community? Where does the line, where's the line and where's action?
If compliance, not to steal your words, but if compliance is being met currently, but you have information or, excuse me, or believe that the building is somehow, you know, again, vacant to the extent that it's violated our ordinances, then we can take action immediately to go ahead and ameliorate those. My question to you, chief, would be, and I don't know from the fire perspective, but from the county's perspective, are they coming in and doing routine inspections of that property?
So the way that the inspections work, the fire code is a maintenance code and the building code is a new building code. So the building department would only come if we request, because we don't have engineering expertise to say that a building is structurally sound, or they may also be able to provide original documentation so that we would know which code to apply on the fire side of it. Is it an imminent danger from the last time we inspected it? No, because he came into minimum compliance. And the owner, the way I was always taught, the owner has, has the right to maintain it as long as it's being compliant in whatever state that they choose.
Yeah. And as long as there is a level of compliance that is occurring and not a fallback, then there's not much we can do about it at this point. But if you come into information that shows that those incidences are, then we can enforce at that point.
Absolutely. We keep Mr. Eggleston informed when we find conditions that are not healthy for life and safety.
I think the key here is, again, from my building inspection days that you said, when you build a building, whether it was the 1989 building code or the 1996, the code basically says you maintain that building to that code. You can't force them to upgrade, and that's why I know chief gets a little hesitant. There are things better now than you did before, but however that building was built, it is in compliance with that code at the time. So, but once somebody renovates a space, then that becomes different. Then they have to comply with the new code and upgrade to whatever that may be, fire alarms and those types of things. So, yeah, we know the guy's probably really compliant, but there are things, obviously, ceilings and things that are hidden that you really don't get into, like, you know, like you would normally, you know, you lift tiles every day and check them around, some do, but this building could be in compliance with whatever code, and that's what it is.
How do we trigger having and inspected though, because there have been modifications to that building, when they've had different tenants move in? Has anyone ascertained whether that triggered?
That should be through the building department when, when modified, conditions are made, changing walls. That doesn't mean you change light fixtures, but if they modify the space, they should be getting a permit from the building department, then they should review it. Now, they can review it to the new code, they can review it to the rehabilitation code, which does allow certain things. I mean, there's a lot of avenues they can go down, but the one thing we talked about initially was at some point with our department, will they be more involved in plan reviews for themselves? And should we charge for those plan reviews? Because ultimately, they're the ones that are going to be responsible in the end, so.
President Huffman, when an occupancy changes, they have to get a certificate of occupancy from the building department. If we find on a regular and routine inspection that occupancy has changed, we ask the business owner for that updated certificate of occupancy through the building department. The zoning, our own zoning department also helps us when a new business comes in. If the occupancy, now, very technically, zoning is not occupancy under the fire code. So our occupancies, the definitions may be similar, but just because it's a zoning change doesn't mean it's an occupancy change per the Ohio fire code. So when there is, a new business comes in, if it's like occupancy to like occupancy, nothing changes because it's the same occupancy and we use the same rules and regulations. But if a, I'm going to use a very extreme example, if a daycare goes to a prison, that's an occupancy change. And I use that on purpose because it's very stark difference.
Our daycare's prisons.
So we're, what I hear is there's unlikely to be, at this point, you haven't found a problem with the fire compliance, but you intend to continue inspecting that in order to assure that it's in compliance? And you don't have any information that as a building, there's a reason that we can move forward because there's not a, you know, structural issue that's creating a hazard?
That is correct at this time.
What about the police department? Has this been a draw on, have there been calls where we've had to monitor that building or that space, the parking lots or? Thank you, Chief Howard.
I can't answer specifically the number of calls, but I can tell you that it's not a huge draw on our, our folks.
Okay. Yeah, I know the lighting appears to be, you know, not maintained to a level that it's a dark, unmaintained area, and when you say there are broken windows and things, that makes me think that there may be activity over there that, you know, would attract people for bad reasons. Do any other council members have any?
Yeah, I just had a question about the BK sign. So we have no legal standing to do anything on that property since it's private property?
No, I think there actually is. If you, and I'll try and get a memo out to council here soon, but under chapter 154 and there's a number, I don't want to go too deep a dive in this, but there are some options that we can explore that would do differently than the prosecution side of it, but more on the enforcement from the city side and then a recoup of the costs and fees that were used.
As an assessment?
Correct, duplicate on the tax.
I would assume that it's in violation of the sign code.
It is.
If it's not, we should probably look at our.
Without being official about that, yes.
I would think there would be something we could do past writing a letter and saying, you have.
There can be, absolutely, there can be under the, under the code section. And again, you would, I don't know how much it would cost, again, go in and take care of those signs, physically take them down. The only other issue that can be created is if there's any signage inside the building is to whether or not, if we can't gain, get inside building itself, whether we can take some measures on the outside of the windows where it's being displayed such that it no longer shows that.
Do we have the capability, staff, to take that sign down if we obviously get to that point?
Yeah, you'd have to contract that again, and I don't, obviously not knowing what that would cost, but, or being looked into pretty heavily at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it sounds like we're addressing the BK sign. Ms. Spinder, you're going to give us more information about the health department at your next meeting. I appreciate that. And Mr. Eggleston, would you be willing to give us a cost for maintaining the public areas as well as areas that we have access to through easement so we know what the allocation may be?
I don't. I'm going to have to work with the law director because I don't know if we have the right just because there's an easement that we go in and mow or go without, or easements or utility easements. I mean, we get a pole, we can do certain things, but it may not necessarily mean we can go on and maintain something. Like I say, we all have in our yards five-foot easement and we're responsible to mow those ourselves, but I don't know if we have the right to do that. We'll get you an answer. I think Mr. Freeman will look into that also, give you a sort of legal opinion on it.
Okay.
I'm just talking off the cuff.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's progress as well as knowing can we allocate some funds toward that. I would assume that's what you're discretionary spending. I would not think the amount would be that much, but if.
This cost the $50,000, we've got issues, but.
Right.
Can we find out the last time there was a building inspection done of that property? Get a copy of that, or is that, is that a county thing?
It's not a building inspector. A building inspector doesn't come in and inspect buildings per se, only at the time you pull a permit, that's when you get building inspections. Everything really does fall on the fire department when they do their annual inspection. So we rely on the chief to go in and say, okay, there's these issues, you need to correct those. Again, there's, there's fire walls and stuff that have to be maintained, so.
No, I meant, well, I don't think that's necessarily true, right? If there was a crack in the foundation, that wouldn't be the fire department, that would be the building department.
Not necessarily. I mean, I can have a crack in my foundation, that doesn't mean the foundation's bad.
That's why you have a building.
Well, basically, I wouldn't do that as a building inspector. I'd tell them, you need to get an engineer or somebody to look at this, but I would not make that determination because the first thing would happen is you'd draw me into court and say, are you an engineer? And I'd say, no, I have construction experience, but there's numerous foundations that crack, but it doesn't mean that there's something that's detrimental to the building, so.
Well, how do we advance it? Because like the buggy whip, we know that was an example of structural issues that created a public hazard and so the city.
Well, they actually had a failure inside that prompted.
So how do we equate that though, before we?
Well, because again, now, now look at it this way, so they sent the inspector in, he said, oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, well, we'll condemn this and tear it down. Well, then it turned into, no, you've got a structural engineer. So now it became a debate between structural engineers, does a building have to come down or does this able to be fixed? So a building inspector doesn't go in to tell you that the failure, the building's going to collapse. That's not the expertise. The expertise of the building inspector is really to say, did you build it to code? Did you maintain it to code? Once I walk out of that building, if somebody came and complained, I would say, let's just say they took a wall out that might be structural, I may be able to come in and say, why'd you take that wall out? The plans show this being structural, but for me to go in and try to do an inspection and tell you, you're going to fail here, it's not the role of the building inspector.
Well, let's suppose a roof falls in. Who, what public authority would be in charge of saying, you can't have a building here with a roof that's collapsed?
A building inspector would say, hey, until this gets looked at, you can't have somebody in because obviously the roof.
So they call the occupancy department then?
Well, the roof caved in, then obviously there's a sign that something structurally happened.
But the, didn't the roof leak and that's why they lost one of their tenants or something like that?
Well, the air conditioning. But that becomes a property maintenance, not a code enforcement.
I guess I'm just trying to advance the discussion of, is there something the public authority can do to look at a building before it actually does collapse like the buggy whip? So do we have any options for inspection or something beyond just an annual fire inspection?
Well, fire inspection, I would assume.
Is there anything else? Is there any kind of structural?
Property maintenance, unless, well, what some communities do is they do, property maintenance inspectors are those types of things where, like for apartments, they get inspectors and they do an annual inspection. So if they had an annual inspection, we did it under property maintenance, then it could be, here's some issues we found, here's some issues need to address. Again, it wouldn't be the inspector saying, yes, I see a cracked foundation, I see broken glass, I see a little crack in your wall, you need to have this looked at. But for them to determine there's an issue really and say you need to fix this becomes really a structural engineer problem.
So to be clear, there is absolutely no public entity to be in contact to look at a building before it falls down, that says that there's structure, something structurally wrong with the building and something needs to take care of. There's no authority anywhere that can come in and do.
If you call us property maintenance-wise, say, I have an issue here with my neighbor, it looks like your shed's falling down, yes, the code enforcement individual can go out and say, yes, your shed's falling, you need to do something to fix this. Now how to fix it becomes a different story. But to say, you've got a crack in your foundation, as you said, concrete cracks, those types of things, I would say, yeah, there's things that are telltale signs that somebody could say, if my corner of my building's falling in, then I guess, yeah, it's pretty obvious there's something that needs to be done.
So how do we pursue the broken windows and fixes? Is that nuisance property that violates our property maintenance? So we're pursuing that because it seems as though there's visible signs.
Thirty-some years.
Well.
I don't, thirty years. It's where the, it's where the old drugstore was next to the food town.
How about a fine?
All right. So it looks like maybe the property maintenance. So my request would be, let's really analyze this and see if there's a way that we can pursue improvement.
When our code enforcement is complaint-driven, we don't go out and inspect buildings every day into the, again, if you do want to do something like that, then you'd have to implement something to say, here's a program where we're going to inspect you once a year, just like the fire, and you're going to fix whatever it is.
Okay. So that gives council something actionable?
Right, right. And you can fund that, right. Otherwise, what they do, they call Matt's office and says, hey, you know, I just noticed there's a broken window here, or as I tell staff, you go by and see something that's broken, then let the owner know you need to fix this. Now it becomes a property maintenance issue. So that's where it would all come in.
Well.
Unless it's a violation of the building code, because I believe Chief Howard just said he doesn't deal with violations of the building code.
Right. He will deal with me, he deals with life safety issues. So I didn't say he was going to go around with broken windows. Now, he may be able to if there's something in the fire code, but at this point, say, if somebody had a broken window, they didn't call the building inspector to get a broken window fixed. They called basically the property maintenance and that's where it would come out. I have to maintain my building to the code it was built to. But if I see a cracked foundation, what I'm trying to tell you is, that doesn't mean that's a building code violation necessarily. It could be that the concrete or the block cracked. And if I see it sinking, then there could be an issue there that may, that needs to be addressed, but how far do you take that to be addressed? Is it affecting the structure? Is it going to collapse tomorrow?
Well, I think the cracked foundation is probably just an example, but I think that what we're looking at there is what is a, how can we move forward and find a solution for what is obviously the plaza? And then I think it's widespread. I mean, there, there are a lot of other properties along that stretch that we need to be thinking about, how can we improve visually that area so that it's going to attract businesses? So citizens feel like they, you know, have a community here that they enjoy. And ultimately, if that means us changing something about the property maintenance code to make it more specific, I just am asking for some direction legally, what can we do to improve it?
And that's what I'm telling you, is don't think the building department's going to come and do all these things. The property maintenance would be weeds, which is the easiest thing to take care of to some degree. When you say aesthetics, if that's what you're talking about, that's easy enough to address in property maintenance.
That's one piece of it, yes. And if that's easy, that would be great to start with.
And we all know parking lots, we were fighting with parking lots at this point with Mr. Eggleston, shrubbery and those types of things. You know, under the zoning, your signs can be removed based upon your zoning code. So there's things that they can do, that's not property maintenance, more the zoning. So those are things that can be taken care of just by what we have in place already. But again, we don't go out and inspect buildings to find those. If somebody calls us and says, this window's broken, or there's something here, hey, this office is missing at the plaza, what are you doing? There's birds going in and out of there, that's a property maintenance issue that our staff would take care of.
And I guess what I'm struggling with is that it's been like this for a long time and if our property maintenance is intended to take care of that and gives, enables us to do that, then how do we get to that next step to get it taken care of?
Well, that's why I say it's a long process. It's not something that happens overnight. Again, I know people want instant results, but that's not what it is. So what Eggleston's done so far is, he painted the back of the building, he said he got rid of the truck, and it's just constant working. They finally put some soffit in there to keep the birds out. Now you've got other things you've got to work on. He's done landscaping, which we said, great, that's great you did landscaping, but your curb work needs work, there's other things you need to concentrate on to help build this place up. So now it becomes this, again, here's a list of things you need to do. Mr. Eggleston, do you have an idea of when these will get done and a reasonable time limit to see whether he's going to comply or not? So you get the violation, you work with them, you see if he's going to do nothing, you work with them again to say, look, you've got to accomplish something here. And then at some point, whether that's 30, 60, 90 days, I think you've got to look at what's reasonable for somebody to do something. You've got to line up a contractor, they've got to do some other things to get that going. Is three months reasonable? And then you say, okay, you haven't been really helping us, Mr. Eggleston, you haven't done anything to get anybody moving forward, so we're going to go to court.
What violations have we notified him about currently?
I think we, I can get you a list. I think it's been a number of things.
So if it's been a number of things for, for a while, I think what President Huffman is alluding to is, we have already gone through that step. What is the next?
And what I've told you a number of times, Mr. Woody, is the fact that it still isn't gonna matter unless you get a court to agree with you. And so far, and so far...
Well, we won't get a court to do that unless we ask.
Well, we have asked, and we just have not made the progress with the courts to say, "Here's the order to do it." When he had the vehicle, it took us forever to get rid of the vehicle, and we had, basically, his license put on hold for that vehicle. But we've gone through other things, I believe, Mr. Freeman.
Well, it seems like there are a lot of municipalities that are probably not having, you know, as I'm driving around, I'm not seeing it to the level that we're seeing right in our uptown, so I'm looking for solutions. And I don't know if, if we give you, you know, kind of a plan and work together to be better informed about this is what's been done, it may reduce this level from my end of it, a frustration of, "Why are we looking at this still?"
You know, honestly, honestly, I, I think this is just plain checkers. I mean, I'd much rather see the CIC get into gear and start moving.
But the CIC isn't going to be able to do anything about, like, from the beast, you know, from the interstate moving forward, all of the overgrown area, the CIC is never going to acquire that property. They're not going to do anything to improve the mowing, removing of weeds that are four feet high, you know, that's all.
Fair enough, okay. You, I don't, I don't, I don't complete, well, I don't think it's an easy issue to solve. I think the gentleman that owns the property, or the investment group that owns the property, has played their cards the way they see fit.
Well, I just heard Mr. Eggleston say the weeds and the, like, grass, that that's an easy solution to take care of that. So, that's what I would like to see immediately, I think there could be some improvement there.
Good, we, we changed, I, I, look, I, I don't have any disagreement with very much of what you're saying. But the point is, we changed the code on the nuisance stuff last year. And, you know, this, this comes up, this, this debate's been going on in this town for many years. And it comes up every couple of years, every time somebody goes by it and sees how, when it looks like crap. And then we start, you know, you know, chatting about it again. And the same thing goes, I mean, it's not just the plaza, we got, you know, a dozen houses in the middle of town that are a nuisance. And we put up with that, too. So, if we're gonna really do it and stick to it, then let's make sure we put the plan that's got some teeth and really say, "We're gonna do it."
Right on, that's exactly what I'm saying. We have the property maintenance, it's not really the CIC that's going to affect this, but the property maintenance code and...
I'm offended by a lot of stuff in town, a lot worse than I am the plaza. And I'm offended by plazas, don't get me wrong.
And I'm not limiting to the plaza, like I said, there's other properties along there in that uptown area that, I just need to know, what are our action steps? What can council do to get? And I felt like doing the property maintenance code was going to effectuate a change. I haven't observed that, so what's our next step?
Well, it has, and again, if you look at the list, you can...
I know you said Mr. Eggleston's done, but I'm saying, like, I'm still driving through there and seeing weeds that are four feet tall. And so, that doesn't tell me someone is maintaining their property in the last month.
Well, I've seen the landscaper go through there, but again, it's a game, as Huffman. It doesn't mean because I send you a letter that you're gonna do everything the city says. I will do so much, and then I'll keep doing things.
So, what else can we do? We have to change the game, because if it's a game of let it overgrow, and then we send a letter, then we need something with more teeth, apparently, in order to improve it. Or, the city, like I said, what is the cost for the city just to mow it?
Well, it's not just simply about, I mean, staff gave a recommendation to council to remove the shrubbery requirement in the front, because it makes, it has no purpose. Council decided not to. I would say if you were allowed it...
Well, I think the issue is that...
I think if you allow the zoning change to change, to remove those, then those would go away and the property would look a little better. But my point is that the things we require in zoning orders sometimes create the problems that we're trying to fight at the end of the day.
But let me speak just to that issue, because I recall that coming before, it wasn't this council's previous council. The problem was, what was being proposed was that we move forward. It was not going to affect any of the existing landscaping, which is also an issue. It wasn't saying, "Remove the landscaping," it wasn't improving that, it was saying, "If that bush dies, you don't have to, like, replace it." So, then we're thinking, "Well, then you have three bushes, a dead one that's not replaced, and then you have another three bushes." So, is that really what they're going to improve?
Well, it would have, working with the property owner, to say, "Look, the order that things changed, can we resubmit something for you to get rid of these?" Because if you look what happened right away, that's exactly what happened. You had two, one, two big ones, one short one, so we removed...
Yeah, but that was public property, we removed it, so why don't we...
Same concept, except we're dealing with private property. So, the type of shrubbery he has may or not be, and I don't look at those as the ones that they grow and they feather out is what they normally do. But again, what do you put in place also regulation-wise, that you can work with somebody to affect a change? Again, his landscaper was out there, and we said, "Great, you got a little things done, but you still need to be more." So, if I go to court and say, "Well, by the way, Judge, he did something," and he says, "You, Judge, I'm doing what I can. Oh, but it's not enough for the city." Been down this road so many times that, that's why you continually work with somebody and say, "Oh, great, you got this little bit done, I need some more done." And they get out, they do a little bit more, and they do a little bit more. It's just a game that gets played in and out. You may be lucky and will get everything done, or you're just gonna plod along, because there's always gonna be one more thing that you add to the list. And if he accomplishes something, you applaud it, move on, and you go to the next one. And again, as I said, he's redone the landscaping, that was great, Mr. Eggleston, but now you got weeds. So, now I got another problem I gotta deal with. So, it comes down to, do we just go to court and say, "My God, these are all the things. It's gonna cost us this amount of money, and we'll go in and take care of it for you." At some point, I guess council will say, "Look, you give somebody six months, after six months, take it to court, we don't care."
Well, I think that's what we said with the property maintenance code. So, I'd like to know that what we've stepped through, what we've already legislated, that that's being followed, so that would help. I think also, what we discussed is, there are public areas there that have nothing to do with going to court to mow the curb lawn. We removed the bushes, we planted grass, but up and down, that area still needs improved maintenance. And so, my request is that, you said this previously, that you can talk to Mr. Freeman, decide what areas we can maintain, tell us what the cost is for that, and then we can decide. Yes, we think that's a good idea, just go ahead and maintain it. It's probably going to save us overall, um, the expense of trying to go and enforce these ordinances. So, I think progress is what we're looking for. I feel like we haven't had a lot of communication on steps to get to where we wanna be. If you're doing things that I'm not aware of, I'd appreciate just knowing what those are, and just feeling like we have a plan moving forward, that we're not just playing the circular game and having the same conversation every, you know, like Mr. Schwab said, every, so often it clears up, then we have the conversation again. We're not getting any traction here, any improvement.
We will get you something.
That would be great, I would appreciate that.
I still, I, I still think, okay, that uptown, there needs to be a plan that will, you know, having a plan in order for the development and the revamping of the uptown area will put some teeth into stuff like this, too. It'll garner community support, and it'll get things going. But I guess I would put it back to the members of the CIC to, you know, instead of just meeting once a month, how about getting, rolling up their sleeves and getting things moving to get plans moving?
Yeah, and I think that you make a good point. It would be great to have that accelerated and move forward. I think one of the things that we have to consider, though, is that we're not, you know, that purpose of that is to attract people to develop here and to, you know, to invest here, is what the CIC plan is about. And if we don't have those areas improved that are, you know, a public eyesore and a nuisance, we're going to, we're running the risk of that plan not being successful.
I agree with that, and I would also add, I, I, you know, I don't know what, where we're at relative to development or attracting, um, um, retail into the plaza right now, if we are. God, I, I, I just don't see the benefit of attracting a grocery store at the moment before we have a development plan. I think that would set us back twenty years.
But I don't think that's our role, not to say a grocery store can't go in there. I mean, if it goes in, our, our thing is, we can't tell this owner, "Don't do this, don't do that." And talking with developers, they would assume that you, you were far better off letting it evaluate itself than increase the value.
Right.
So, if, Mr. White...
So, you can say that, but you can't say that, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I mean, I, well, I mean, we all know one thing is, the cost of putting that, of redeveloping the property with, with $5.5 million worth of debt, we should say, or whatever that investment is on the property, on top of what the owner wants, $7, $8 million for somebody to purchase both those parcels, doesn't work within a plan for a developer. And as I'm talking with one, and I don't wanna name them, to these, is that, basically, quit getting people in there. Let the place go down to where the point is, the revenues aren't doing the investment, and therefore, now it becomes more viable for somebody to say, "I'll offer you this much to get out of the deal." So, now you're in the catch-22. Do you let this thing grow, and hopefully, they get the revenues to repair it? Or, the way this thing's structured is that just everybody's happy making some money? Because at this point, we know if somebody's making money, we know the grocery store currently is paying their rent. So, there is nothing here economically that may, puts this guy in a position to say, "Man, I gotta sell this place before it goes under." And again, I know, I know council, I just, and I'm not trying to be obstinate or anything else, I just know how this all works, and I've done it for thirty years. And I know you get frustrated, but honestly, it just, it does depend on the course that you get so far. But what's that sweet spot that you work with somebody to finally be able to go to court and say, "We've done our best, we can't get that"? What is that sweet spot? It may be every three, six months, but when somebody, if I go to court and I show you I've been doing something, if, if the court's really going to go against me knowing, "Well, I just cleaned this up, Your Honor. Well, I'm getting the money around for this, Your Honor, I'm trying to do this." I mean, it's just, I tell a story, I only had one guy that ever went to jail because he defied the judge. But we worked with the gentleman for well over six months. But we got to court, then we dismissed, went to court, dismissed, and finally, got it into court with the guy, we said, "Look, here's, here's the final time, we're going." He went before the judge, says, "Yes, I'll take care of it by November, whatever." He didn't, contempt of court, the judge said forty-five days in jail until you get it done. I mean...
Well, my suggestion is we examine other options that we haven't done before, even if it means going in and taking care of the public area ourselves. That's going to be a meaningful improvement on that property that I think people will appreciate seeing. You know, I get a lot of communication from people that are, you know, feeling the same way that I'm voicing to you, and that is, that they're frustrated with it looking that way and wanna see some improvement. So, if we can examine that, that, I think would go a long way, and I would appreciate that.
We will present a plan to you from the law director, says, "Well, these are the things we'll start doing again. And upon this date, if nothing's done, then we will look at..." I guess the only thing I tell you is, we can look at a landscaping firm ourselves, we'll backcharge to them, but they would have to go and clean it and trim it. I don't think even after trimming is gonna look great, but, um, obviously, to me, I'm mistaken, it's gonna take a whole order to do it. I can't just walk on the property and start hacking away the shrubs.
Well, we'll, we'll see, I need to get with Mr. Carville, and maybe there'll be a way to do that, actually.
Okay, that would be good. Um, was there anything else on uptown that was just a miscellaneous topic that we had? So, no one else, we can move on to the next, which is the fire EMS update. And the purpose of this would be, we've been getting a lot of communication about some, um, pretty concerning response times, staffing issues, um, I know there's been some internal communication that I, about that with council and from Chief Holler. And so, I think there are some questions about what's happening with the department at this point.
I'm here to answer any question you ask me.
Okay, that'd be good, and I can address this to Mr. Eggleston, if you wanna rely on Chief Holler. I know the hiring of, we've been told there are four people that, um, four captains that will be hired. Can you explain when they are going to be hired and when they're actually going to be on staff taking calls?
I think we believe sometime around August.
August is the goal, ma'am, that we have all the examination parts of the process completed. There's three parts, there's an interview, oh, I'm sorry, I'll go in order. There's a written test, there's an interview, and then there was an assessment center. Seven people were invited to the assessment center, because that's what the assessment center, people that hold the process, conduct the process, can maximally hold. All seven of those candidates are gonna be taken to the civil service board for certification of that list. After certification of that list, we give a, a conditional offer of employment to four of those people. I am diligently, staff is diligently trying to attempt to get that civil service meeting conducted as soon as possible. And we're just at the mercy of that board to be able to meet with a court.
And I know we had some alarming information about delayed response time or...
Yes, I'm prepared.
Can you explain, you had referenced, and it's at Peters Road?
Yes, ma'am. Attached, well, I'll just pass it on first, and then go back to my conference, it's easier to get them later.
Thank you.
Make sure I have. Mr. Slimen residents on 7620 Peters Road wrote a letter that is in township, a part of our contracted area. They wrote a letter concerning response times to their structure fire that happened in their detached garage. The front part is the letter that the Monroe Township trustees received. Uh, the, the second memo is my timeline that I received from the Miami County Communication Center. Short terminology is the 911 Center. So, on June 16th, there was a structure fire that occurred at the resident, the reference aggro, 7620 Peters Road. Mr. Slimen's letter, sorry for some of my typos, I did this in, uh, I did this this afternoon. Mr. Slimen indicates that Tip City Fire Department arrived at 9:31 PM. Uh, for the sake of this argument, every time that I give you, tonight's gonna be PM. If I switch back and forth to 24, somebody tell me I switched and go back to the 12 o'clock times, not the 24-hour times. The letter also indicated that the neighbor called 911 at 9 o'clock. Well, records indicate that the 911 Center received the first call at 9:08 and 15 seconds on that evening. The call was dispatched by the 911 Center at 9:08:34. So, due to some upgrades that the 911 Center has, within nineteen seconds, they took the call and were dispatching multiple fire departments to Mr. Slimen and Mrs. Slimen's location. The multiple departments are listed there on the piece of paper for you. Tip City Fire Department Engine 32 was en route at 9:13:13, so approximately, uh, four minutes and 29 seconds later. Engine 32 marked on scene at 9:23, Mr. Slimen's letter indicates that it was 9:31. So, per the dispatch center's timestamp reference for legal record and public record, we had a response time of nine minutes and 59 seconds after we received the call, or after we were en route. The average response time for all fire calls that's dispatched to arrival is nine minutes, 15 seconds. The average response time for EMS calls is six minutes, 34 seconds. And the average response time for all calls is six minutes, 45 seconds. Mr. Slimen also indicated that other departments were there way before Tip City was. As you can see, Van Dalian Engine 2 arrived at 9:24:04. West Milton Engine 71 arrived at 9:25:56. And Bethel Engine 40 arrived at 9:31:48. All these, all these times can be verified via public records request at dispatch, through the Stolen Reporting System that the dispatch center uses.
Okay, but I know you had referenced this in support of the concerns about the staffing. How many people did you have on the schedule that night?
On that night, we had two people on, on staff at night to respond to that fire.
Those were two firefighters, or you only had two people?
We were lucky, we had two firefighters on duty, we had two dual-certified persons. We had two dual certified personnel on duty.
And what is, what are you typically staffing?
The, we're budgeted to staff six part-time person, or one full-time, the, the budget for twenty-twenty-three was one full-time and five part-time every day. We cannot staff that many part-time personnel. We, the, as you can see from all the monthly reports, the turnover's high, and our average staffing is just over three per day.
So the increase in the, the increase in the hourly rate, has it helped?
It, we're attracting enough and recruiting enough new persons to only keep up with the amount of people that are resigning. To give you an idea, we've received two more resignations this week.
So it's not helping?
It's keeping up.
But it's not helping, I guess, I mean.
Not making any progress.
Yeah, you're not making any progress.
Not making progress.
So it's not helping. So what, what would help in the interim while we wait for these four captains to get hired, and then the firefighters, and so on and so forth? What, what, what can we do right now to make those numbers build up?
To have on-duty staffing?
Yes.
Implement the full-time system faster?
Well, what would we do, I mean, what is there to implement faster about that system?
We could hire the firefighter E M T positions now ahead of the schedule at a cost to be borne by the city because we're in a current contract with Monroe Township for the next two years, five months, at a fixed cost to them.
So you're suggesting accelerating the hiring of the full-time people from twenty-twenty-four? Is there a reason to believe that if you, that there are things you could do to accelerate that to get them in position any sooner?
Yes, the civil service rules as adopted by the Civil Service Commission that were just updated by Chief Atkins and I include lateral employment. As an example, the fine officers that were sworn in the night by the mayor, the process for a lateral hire is much faster than it is for a brand-new entry hire. And by much faster, I mean it's two months versus five months.
So you're suggesting that you could hire the four that you've already have in the system now for August?
That's for the captains.
You would have how many in this lateral transfer program?
The, to stay on plan, it would be the four personnel for, for twenty-four. So we could hire them three months early, and then we'd have two full-time personnel per shift, and if we can keep the, keep going, keep treading water, as Mister Liddy indicated, then we would be able to have, we could, most days, we could have five people on duty around the clock.
Is it possible at this point for you to do a different schedule? Because even with eight full-time, you're still short if we're considering the fact that it's very difficult or impossible to maintain your part-time and you have no control over their scheduling. Is it possible to implement a different schedule where the full-timers are working, like the twenty-four forty-eight, so that you are staffed?
No.
More frequently?
No.
Why not?
The twenty-four seventy-two is the plan, and that's, that's our plan, and we want to have that plan implemented. This is not an S O S to change that plan. This is to hire that plan faster. The part-time system, as stated, I, in the original statement that was made, I, I indicated that the part-time only model is costing time for giving. I didn't say that the, the combination staffing was costing time for giving.
It just, I mean, when you tell us that you can't hire part-time, and that they're leaving as quickly as you're hiring them, that tells me relying on part-time is not an effective way of staffing the department at this point. If we're going to accelerate the hiring of full-time, shouldn't we staff in a way that those full-time people are working to fully staff the department?
We will with the twenty-four seventy-twos.
Well, eight people is not going to cover the number.
So you're concentrating on one factor, ma'am. The combination of having eight personnel started now, or even twelve, a full-timer starting now, with the combination of having three to four part-timers on duty will get us to our goal now. We need that combination, and we need it at the twenty-four seventy-twos. Because what attracted people, what recruited people for this captain's position was that schedule, is that schedule. So we need to maintain that schedule at our average cost, our average, what we did for all the cost factors going into that, in supplementation of the part-timers.
So I just, I just, I think we're going down a path that here, you know, we're going to continue to spin our wheels here.
We are not going to spin our wheels if I can hire full-time people now.
And it's pretty shocking.
Most of the reason the part-timers are leaving is because they're obtaining full-time in other departments.
Yes. They're either full-time.
The chief has been saying that for a year and a half.
They're either full-time in other departments, or they took the part-time job for some kind of personal benefit where I want to buy a boat, they make enough extra money to buy a boat, and they leave. I've had other people tell me that they were working two jobs, a full-time job and our job in the fire service, and they were starting to wear out, and they wanted to concentrate on one job. If we implement the plan as is, if with the full-time staffing and the combination staffing, and give it a shot, that's what will happen. We don't need to change schedules, we don't need to do that. Right now, there's a statewide, there's a local, a state, and a nationwide shortage of all firefighters, all E M Ts at every level. I can't state that anymore plainly. So to keep people on duty, we need to have more full-time people as fast as we can afford it, being economically conscious of the citizens of Tip City and their tax dollars. The plan presented is economically sound and viable, and will fill the gaps. It'll never be perfect, but we need a chance to implement it to make it work.
But that's only successful if you can rely on part-timers, which you've told us repeatedly, we can't rely on the part-time because they continue to leave to get full-time employment. So if you only have eight full-time staff, it's not enough to.
Not only, ma'am, I said only, and I put that in my writing, and I've said it multiple times now, we can't rely on part-time only staffing. The plan does not rely on part-time only, it relies on a combination. We have to have that stepping stone unless council wants to go to a three-million-dollar budget next year. I don't think you want to, that's not physically responsible, I'm not saying we should do that. That would be an all full-time career department, which from twenty-one on, we showed through all the budget processes, that what it would cost to have an all-full-time department completely. Yes, would that, that would solve our problem, but we're probably not ready for that, and I, I'm not indicating that we are. What I'm saying is, we need to have the combination, because we're keeping even keel, we're keeping those three people on duty most of the time. It's an average though, right? Some days, there's two, some days, there's four, sometimes we have six people. It all depends on when the folks can work.
Right, and that's what I think the concern is, you don't have a commitment from part-timers because they're either working other jobs, or they're working other departments, or they only want to work enough, like you said, to buy a boat. So they're going to commit maybe two shifts a month, you can't rely on that, and we're seeing the failure of that. I think it's very disturbing to have a parent call nine-one-one with a drowning and have to self-transport. The people of Tip City are paying their taxes, they're doing their end of this, making sure that they're funding this in some way, and so I feel responsible to ask these questions and make sure we're doing everything we can, and doing the math with what you're telling me you have is not covering the department, and we're not responding to calls. I also, I don't know what you're doing, and we know we have two full-time staff members now, yourself and the assistant chief.
Yes.
What hours are you working, and how are you supplementing these part-time?
I was told when I got here not to track every hour that I work, because it would be more than what I'm supposed to work, so I work forty hours a week.
And what schedule are you working?
I work Monday through Friday, eight to five.
And then what about the assistant chief?
He works Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Would staggering your shifts help to ensure coverage? Because this, it's like the fire instance was at night, I don't know when the drowning was, but.
It was during the day on a Saturday.
Had you considered splitting shifts so that one of you is on as a supervisor?
When David Stockler was the assistant chief, him and I split shifts when we started the first supervisors, first new supervisors after my arrival, there were already other supervisors in place to be there to support them. We did that for a short time, and then we went back. We worked, basically, we worked a forty-two-hour work week at a minimum, we worked seven out of fourteen days at twelve-hour shifts, that way we could see all personnel, one of us would see all personnel. That's not conducive with an administrator's schedule, because every other Monday, I was then at a staff, or every other Tuesday, I was at a staff meeting, or I was doing something else. I never worked only seven out of the fourteen days. I didn't work eighty-four hours in a two-week period, I worked ninety to one hundred and twenty-four hours. So then, through all the iterations, I could bore everyone here to death, I'd love to speak with you offline to tell you all the iterations that we've been through attempting to keep this going. There is a, a decision was made in two thousand and eighteen, and it didn't involve me. And the decision was to move the departments in these directions. There's going to be peaks and valleys, there's going to be challenges, there's going to be opportunities. The people that come and work for us are doing a heck of a job for what they have and the restrictions that are placed upon them. I have people that want to work three thousand hours a year, and I'm not allowed to let them work three thousand hours a year, because council, so far, and I'm not blaming this council, any council after two thousand and fourteen, will not offer them health insurance benefits because it costs too much. If I could offer a part-timer full-time hours and benefits, they would work a whole lot more for us. I can promise you that. So there's things that just aren't, aren't economically viable.
Well, are those people that you're referencing, are they in your full-time, you know, pipeline?
They will be as soon as I'm allowed to hire them.
Eight to twelve people, so those part-timers would come on full-time.
They can't stick around for three to four years waiting on us to implement something. This change started in two thousand and eighteen.
Chief Holler, and you know, I don't, and I have a very high level of respect for all of our first responders, so this isn't about cutting corners and saving money. We have the tax dollars have been paid for these services. I'm really concerned about hearing reports. I, I understand factually there are some mistakes in what's been reported timeline as far as that response. But when we know there are two people responding, and two people are scheduled, so this wasn't that we had people, you know, just a crazy night that there were three or four different units out in different directions. If we know there are only two people to respond to all of the area of Tip City plus when our township, we need to change something. And if that means accelerating hiring, I think that, you know, that's something council needs to consider doing, and that should be presented formally to council as an opportunity to resolve some of this. But if you're only talking about eight people, that's still not covering the hours. And I, we need to see a plan that's going to take care of this problem.
I gave the city manager a plan. We would have had the captains hired two months ago if us as a council hadn't sat on this thing since the first year and didn't vote it into place until April.
And that's actually not true, because it was going through a process.
If I may, excuse me, and I try to disrupt anything, but here's what it comes down to a little bit. Yes, the city budgeted X amount, X amount of dollars, and as I told the council on the email, is the other, the other part of this is what the township can afford. We can implement, you can implement four people right now if you so choose, if you're willing to spend that money. So if you really want to know, again, what can we do, then what do you want to do knowing that I don't know if you're going to get your total twenty-six percent out of the township? Chief Hall and I had ups and downs, because the way it was explained to me again was, through Doc English, was he averaged those four years and said, look, you hire two now, you hire two, you hire two, you hire two, the money we put in there will build up, so that by year four, we've got a hundred percent. We know we got to put on two more mills to cover our part of this, and that's how we're trying to implement it. If they're able to afford more based on their millage, then that's what we would have to look at. Then we could accelerate the hiring. Right now, we know we've delayed, because the delays, and I'm not saying who, what, where, why, but due to the delays in getting this implemented, we've saved up enough over possibly the nine months, talking to this agreement, to be able to say between the township and us, we can now hire the two additional that we would have hired in twenty-four. So we can get those on board, but through the hiring process and civil service, I say two, I'm sorry, four, would be October. So then we would have the benefit possibly in October, November, October, November, December, or November, December. So we can do that if council wants us to move forward, if you're comfortable with that. The money's covered, you'll be budgeting next year, and that will be covered again.
My point was just even with that plan, it's not enough to cover the hours and the twenty-four forty-eight, if you're not doing that plan, which was something that was presented as an option when we were talking about this, it was something that I supported, the twenty-four forty-eight schedule. Going twenty-four seventy-two, it's us.
You're combining two things, ma'am, with all due respect, that aren't, aren't combinable. What council could do for Tip City residents and Tip City Emergency Services, if you wanted to make an impact now, is we hire all twelve firefighter, paramedic positions as soon as possible, whether the township can pay for us or not, or pay their twenty-six percent or not. That's what you could do to make an immediate impact and have those personnel on duty, and then we'd have somewhere between six and seven people on duty on a regular basis as soon as we could get them hired. That's what you could do.
Chief, e- even if we do speed up in that process, what are you going to do in the interim to make sure that these shifts are covered until we can hire these people?
We'll keep scrambling like we have been. There's also things, like I said, I'll just keep going on because nothing I say seems to be communicated correctly, and I apologize for that. But since the time that we've done this, we had volunteer shifts that were unique. I was volunteering along with others every third night. Every third night, I was on call for twelve, twelve hours, including my regular daytime shifts. After six months, we reviewed that, I, me and one other person was actually signing up for their twelve hours every third night. We're down to one volunteer, now two, because we just had one young man that wanted to go from part-time to volunteer. The solution is to hire the full-time people. We have been, we have been this way since I've been here. When I started the history thing in two thousand and nineteen, when I came on, right before I came on, a bunch of people resigned. Right after I got on, a bunch of people resigned. It was because there was a big change implement in process. I haven't hidden anything since two thousand and nineteen. There's been peaks and valleys, there's been really good days, and there's been really bad days. I get it, it happens all the time. In my reports, I, I've been saying for months how many hours that we're, don't have staffing. But now, it's, all of a sudden, now it is. And it's not twenty-four forty-eights, and it's not twenty-four seventy-twos, it's full-time people. This council's already made a resolution, and they told staff that we're going to go with the twenty-four seventy-twos. We implemented the pay schedule, we did everything in the processes that the council did. If you're asking me what you can do right now, you can appropriate the money as a council to hire as many of the full-time people now, regardless of what the township pays for or not, because they're in a contract until two thousand and twenty-six. And then we'll renegotiate that contract at that time. We need full-time people, you know.
That you prepare for council.
Okay.
For council, and I think you need to consider some other things, because the plan that was implemented that is in place now, that was approved by council, was exactly what you requested in terms of how we were going to hire the full-time positions, the timeline for doing that, the supplementing with part-time people, and the roster that you had. And so there was no change to that plan, it was exactly what was implemented.
We can keep going with the plan.
What I'm suggesting is that if that plan needs to change, because we need to accelerate the hiring, that you also consider some other things that one would make this more affordable, because we know that the township is limited in what their contribution can be in the way that they've scaled it out with their village. And that you consider some other options, because like I said, I don't think that based on the hiring and the numbers, when you do the math, it's going to provide the full coverage. And I think an assurance that we're providing safety services for the citizens has to be a very high priority, even if that means recruiting people on a different schedule than what you originally had hoped to be able to propose. So I'd ask that we don't shut down that conversation, that we look at all options here, and so the other is just equipment-wise, I think that, you know, as part of that, I'd like to see that addressed. There've been a couple of things, you know, do we have a need for additional equipment? What, you know, if you're hiring? What, you know, if you're hiring several more full-time people on an accelerated plan, how does that work? What are the additional costs that come with that? So that's not something you have to answer right now, but I think that's a consideration. There's also been a proposal that we take on some responsibilities with Elizabeth Township. You know, I, I don't know how that fits in here, I think that's something that we need to really consider. Does that help us or does that hinder us if we're changing our plan? So.
We're not changing the plan.
So I would like, well, you're talking about accelerating hiring of full-time, and that does, that limits our part-time people and maybe changes the need. There's also been some talk about maybe our equipment is not, has been at Elizabeth Township? I don't know if you can respond, that's my last question for you, because can you respond to, is some of our equipment parked at Elizabeth Township or being stored there?
Yes, Rescue Thirty-One is at Elizabeth Township at State, what they call Station Forty-Five on Children Home Road. When we purchased that in two thousand and twenty, we had plenty of staff to be able to respond with it. Since that time, we don't have enough staff to respond with that piece of apparatus. It was out of service almost continuously, so we put the apparatus only out at Elizabeth Township's building for safe storage, so that we could maintain it in a good, ready state. And we took the equipment that's on that piece of apparatus, and we're dispersing that amongst the other vehicles so that we can provide an appropriate response.
So we have enough staff in two thousand and twenty, but it has since decreased since two thousand and twenty-three? Because that's kind of against what you've been saying, is that we've been understaffed since two thousand and eighteen. So staff has decreased since two thousand and twenty? Your budget has increased a million two since two thousand and twenty. So how has staff decreased?
The budget's only one point five, it hasn't increased one point two. So.
It's, it's, it's increased significantly since.
It hasn't been, it hasn't hit the run rate before it yet.
Yeah.
Okay, it's budgeted, but it hasn't hit the run rate yet. For God's sake.
My question is, is that if, he's proposing to jump a ton of money into this.
It's the volunteer.
If it's just money, why has there been a decrease in personnel from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three when his budget has increased a million dollars?
Code. We, the budget has not increased a million dollars. We have lost all volunteer firefighters, except for one. We've lost people to respond back into the station when they're on their off time, doing whatever they would prefer to do.
That's it, that's the change.
That's one of the big, yes, that's who, that's who would come and get Rescue Thirty-One.
I'd like to ask a question. Great, I'm assuming after reading this letter, your guys were chasing this guy. So I'm assuming as soon as they hit that pole, he was on the radio calling for fire assistance right away.
Yes.
So this, our neighbor, this stuff, your, your guy was chasing him on the thing, calling it into the, to the center and saying, he's just hit a pole, he's, he's in a house, it's on fire, so I questioned this.
Fire didn't happen initially though.
Well, okay, but you would've already called for a squad or something to come in, so, yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Chief, I, I, and I would also, even if we do, and again, even if we do hire all twelve new firefighters in the next couple of months, what are we going to do in the interim, in the next few months, to make sure that shifts are covered? Because six months ago, there was an incident where we related to Christmas.
Fire.
Yeah, where we related to, to, to a fire. The drowning victim, this, you know, but there, there's only two personnel on that engine. Even if it does respond in five minutes, there's only two personnel. So something needs to happen tomorrow to make sure that we are covered until we can hire those.
And what do you suggest?
We've already.
I mean, I, I get.
Split shifts with, with the assistant chiefs, so that one manager is on duty at night and one manager is on duty during the day.
That makes sense to me, that does.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that help with coverage immediately? It wouldn't hurt.
So, so you're saying that I work eight to five and A.C. works five to two?
Two to ten.
Something along those lines. I, again, I keep hearing how I'm not supposed to be in charge of this, so, but I, I do expect that something needs to happen in the interim, because we're not covering it. Correct? Something needs to happen right now to try to protect the citizens of Tipp City.
Yes, so the weekends are our biggest issue, quite honestly. Saturdays, Friday nights and Saturdays are our biggest issue. We've put people onto what we call a regular rotation to where they're assigned to come to work. That has helped a little bit. We're making all these little interim steps. And this plan, it doesn't have to accelerate, I probably spoke out of turn, I'm passionate about this. If we implement the plan as is, we'll keep working and we'll keep moving towards the ultimate goal.
I am not against acceleration, I think acceleration is a good idea at this point. But what I'm saying is, two incidents, three incidents have happened in the past six months. Something needs to happen tomorrow to try to do a better job to protect the citizens before we can hire these other personnel.
Chief, can I help you out just a second?
Sure.
I wasn't invited to the discussion, but I threw my two cents in here. If you wanna change it tomorrow, I would offer all the part-timers health insurance. Pick your five part-timers that you want to offer health insurance, let them work an unlimited number of hours. But that's what we've been trying not to do since the Affordable Care Act came in, but that solves your problem tomorrow.
Thank you.
Well, they used to be able to work unlimited hours until the government stepped in and said that they can't work past thirty hours a week.
That's what Mr. Green's referring.
Can you, can you include that in the proposal that you're going to send President Houghan?
How many?
Whatever that looks like.
I'll do everything that the manager directs me to do.
How many people, are you gonna leave it up to us to decide how many need to be on the shift?
Well, we wanna see when the math works out, so we would do that provided.
First, I need to know how many people you want. I can tell you, if you need six or needs eight, that's what it is.
I've been told I'm not supposed to figure out how many.
Right, that's what I'm saying, send us the proposal, we can look at it and say.
Well, but you seem to be doing a good job telling us, so I think at this point.
Well, what I'm telling you is that citizens are obviously endangered, and something needs to happen.
Something needs to change.
And I understand that, but I want you to understand too, this has been going on for a long time, that's probably hit the wall. Because this has been talked about even before you got out of council, is how we're gonna handle this. And things have dropped off little by little. And again, there's a lot of things at play here that just aren't beyond our control. And I understand you want coverage, I understand you want all these things, but I don't care where you go, who you talk to, they're all having trouble recruiting, unless you're paying top dollar beyond what everybody else is, you struggle to get personnel. So your options are, carry out the plan, hire full, full-timers, fill in with the part-time, de-damn the cost, and move forward. If that's what you want, that's what we can do at this point, as Chief said. While we're hiring the captains, we can place an ad in August, we can get all those people online. And the interim, yes, you're still going to struggle. There is no placebo, whether the chief and A.C. work a weekend, there is no placebo that's going to make this for sure. So you've gotta understand, those are your options. We can give you numbers, and we will give you the numbers for the plan to say, this is what it is to implement it, but you've got other things.
So what you're saying is, there's literally nothing we can do in the interim that would help?
What I'm telling you is, we're doing the best we can, you don't wanna accept that, because you think two extra people, from what I'm hearing, is gonna change that. People that have, people that have other jobs, that work part-time for us, don't have an obligation to work for us. So you can't force somebody to come to work part-time.
And I don't think that that's what he is, I don't think Mr. Liddy's saying that. I know that I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we implemented a plan, the majority of council voted for a plan which is not working. It's not working because we're sending.
It hasn't been implemented, ma'am, that's different than not working.
No, we are out of the timeline, and when I'm looking at, we're gonna hire four full-time. Okay, you've got four full-time working every third day, or every fourth day, actually. So you've got four people working every fourth day. So that truck that went out to the fire with two people on it is now gonna have, what, three? That's still not enough, that's still under staff. So we need to be looking at, the plan is not going to work in the foreseeable future, and like Mr. Liddy said, we can't have this continue. So tell us, because you're the chief, you're the city manager, this is how many hours we're gonna cover. This is how many people would be on that. I mean, I know there's going to be times when you get three calls at the same time, there's a percentage of our calls that are overlapping. But when you tell me there were two people on, or you tell me that you told someone, we don't have an ambulance, and they had to self-transport the childrens, it's not acceptable. So we need to know what is going to happen to change this. And I get, it's not you, you're working hard, you're doing what you can, you've been educated in this area, you've pro- you've proposed this plan, but as council members, I feel responsible to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, and we need to have something that's feasible. We need to have something that says, if we put eight people on full-time, and then we offer healthcare, like Mr. Green has suggested, to get these part-timers, so we can say, yeah, you're gonna commit thirty hours a week, or whatever it is, to us in exchange for these benefits. I need to know that's gonna work, I don't wanna just keep doing stopgap and have people at risk.
The, the plan's not stopped yet. I, I do want counsel, and even though I've shown some emotion and passion tonight, I have worked my tail off for Tipp City. I do respond in when I'm available, off-duty, four calls, middle of the night, middle of the day, doesn't matter. So is Assistant Chief Reilly, so did Assistant Chief Dockler before that, so did all the brave men and women before I even got here.
Which, I'm thanking for that, and that's what I said, is we've all shown passion, like I'm not usually speaking up like this. I know Mr. Liddy, some of the others, and Mr. Eggleston, and we're all passionate about it, and I appreciate that. And I'm not trying to minimize your role in this, I'm just saying.
I'll work with the manager to fulfill your proposal as you requested.
I appreciate that.
Chief, quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many part-timers do we have on staff right now?
Not including the resignations that I received this week, forty-one.
Forty-one?
Yes, sir.
How many would be good candidate to go up to full-time?
If they're interested, anywhere between sixteen to twenty, that's off the cuff, I would have. I don't, I don't know all the people that are interested, that's the, that's the key. The, there's just so many things that happen that I can't sit here on the dais and explain to you that you'd have to live out. The placebo of doing something right now, you know, this was all started in two thousand and twenty. This, these things have been happening right underneath you this whole time. This isn't, the last six months isn't new. The last, the last six months is, I've finally been explaining every detail of what's going on. And now, you can see what I've been dealing with for four years plus, and why I've been asking, when I've been asking for stuff. Now you feel what I feel, and I feel like, sometimes I do feel like I'm failing, because we can't get that staffing. But I can't write a checkbook, I don't have the checkbook, I don't make all the policies. We implement and we work our butts off to attempt to serve the citizens. There's, there's members on this dais that I was the only person that showed up to their house, and this wasn't yesterday. This was years ago to help their loved one, because our ambulance was busy, because there was only two people on duty, and it just happened to be a daytime, and I could get away. So this has been happening. So it didn't happen overnight, we're not gonna get out of it overnight. And I'll, I'll work with the city manager to give you the proposal as you requested.
I appreciate that, thank you. Did any other council members have anything else on this issue for Mr. Eggleston, Chief Holler?
We'll, we'll do our best to have some team next meeting. That's acceptable. I know you're shaking your head, so I guess we'll, we'll have it ready for you.
Okay, thank you. Right, well, we're moving on from Ms. Lanis and Ms. Sturges, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I got it, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments on items not on the agenda, and thank you for patiently waiting. We have, I think, two people that'd like to seek, if you could step forward, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, step forward to the podium, and then we'll need your name and your address.
My name is Michael Wensler, I'm here with Gateway Tipp LLC, Gateway Climate Control Storage, forty-seven thirty-eight Gateway Circle in Kettering, Ohio. I wanna thank the fire chief and all your first responders and firefighters for your service, and fire police chief for your police officers and officials, thank you, tough job. So I just wanted to ask about the moratorium on the storage, the self-storage, did an update on that? I'm not exactly sure, there was a.
Let me just interrupt you for one minute to say that we actually, there was a moratorium on the study session, and while it's not on the agenda, it was something that we discussed earlier. And typically, in citizens' comments, we don't respond, it's not a dialogue. Certainly, you can ask Mr. Eggleston, any questions, direct those to him, but as council, we don't engage in dialogue during this part of our meeting. So.
You're doing a good job.
Again, we're, we're planning on, at the next council meeting, to have legislation on to be introduced to at least for one hundred and eighty days. And moratorium on those while we look into further regulations, so. Council has, has ability to introduce it, and the next meeting in August, which we meet the first and third. Monday of the month, we then have a public hearing and act upon that legislation.
And then would that become law thirty days later? The moratorium would be enacted thirty days later, or what point in time?
Yes, trying to look at the date just to help you out, August twenty-first would be the public hearing on that legislation.
And if, if approved, then it would be thirty days prior after that.
Thirty days, roughly, it would be coming up next year.
Okay, so, 'cause the reason I'm asking is, we have, in, in, in purchasing a property on North Hyatt, and it's a property that's been vacant for quite some time, and I certainly, at this hour of the night, don't wanna bore you with anything, I wanna get it quickly. But we are interested, we're, got a zoning approval to do climate control indoor storage, and it has some acreage with it, which we'd like to combine, obviously, to economy and scale-wise, business-wise, et cetera. And that property has been vacant for quite some time. And the issue is that, according to, the zoning for the inside is, is fine, but for the outside, because we're gonna be developing the land, we have to spend, maybe up to twenty thousand dollars, just to prepare all the documentations to be able to, to submit, for them to be able to say that you can proceed. And of course, if you do a moratorium the day before, we're just lost. So I'm just trying to find out the chronology of events that would allow us either to pursue that now, within a certain timeframe, or if we didn't, would the moratorium, you said, be for one hundred and eighty days? I'm assuming that could go on and be extended or be permanent, is that correct?
I think it could be extended if council so chooses. Our goal is that somewhere between that timeframe that we would have, well, one is, Mr. Spring has to take council's request to the planning board for consideration, so they'll have a work session, then they'll hold a meeting, and then they make a recommendation to council as to where they think maybe some different regulations are, propose different regulations. Then Mr. Spring has a process after that to get it to council, set a public hearing, those types of things.
And Mr. Spring is very informative, right? I appreciate him, because we.
Very helpful.
Well, we met, I'm encouraged when I come to a city and they're straight shooters, and they say like it is, and this gentleman did that, and I appreciate that.
And he, he'll, he can tell you exactly what the planning process of, I mean, you can call him or email, stop him, he'll, he can explain that portion at all. I can tell you, by August twenty-seventh, we'll have a public hearing on that legislation, and then council.
And if council votes and then they approve it, then it'd be thirty days before that, and I think.
Right.
That'll be the, but prior to that time, kinda like we talked about today, we would have up till that time to present.
Correct.
So there wouldn't, there would not be a.
The allocation prior to the effective day of the moratorium, that would be a moratorium, then you'd be, right, you'd approve this one, so.
And so there couldn't be an issue where there would. And so there couldn't be an issue where there would be a moratorium within an emergency meeting or et cetera that comes up and you could just decide next week that hey, it's, it's, we have a moratorium. Is that correct?
Right now, legislation's not being proposed as emergency legislation. So I believe that up to that point, you could get your application in with your plans for approval.
Okay. So there wouldn't be any issue where they could do that within a week or two or next week or two month weeks or a month or?
Until I have legislation that says you can't do it, then I guess.
So that's the 30 days and the 30 days. Well, thank you all very much, it's late, have a good evening, thank you all for your service to Tip City.
Thank you, sir. I believe there's, did someone else want to speak? If you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Oh, my name's Jacob, I'm from 100631 Schiller Road. This is Rachel, she's a, she's my partner, so we're here to represent the Roger Presley Trail.
Do you need my address too?
Yes, if you could get that.
Yeah, 2272 Twin Oaks Drive, Levnan, Ohio.
Okay, and sorry, I don't know that we got your full name.
Rachel Crossman.
Okay, thank you.
And Patrick's my last name.
Okay.
So we're from Dayton, we're studying to be mechanical engineers in Dayton. We come up here to work with Roger on the Roger Presley Trail in Garden. So today we just have some of your concerns we want to point out to the council. Rachel, do you want to hand out the paper?
Yeah, is it all ready if I hand this out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So past 10 years now, Roger's been taking care of the trail and he won't be around forever, so we just want to go over how we can take care of the trail moving on in the future. How it's been is Roger's kind of been the guy in charge, he takes care of the trail. But since he won't be around forever, we want to make sure that the trail can be preserved. So the, the big thing for taking care of the trail is keeping the grass grows on the trail, so we need to keep the grass mowed and keeping the honeysuckle from overgrowing, which involves weed eating the trail and mowing the trail. So it's important to keep the trail wide so the spiders don't shoot across and, you know, when you're running down there, the spiders will bite you. So the big thing Roger wants to talk about is keeping the, weeding the trail at least once a month. Important key points to that is the emergence, emergency exits, 1 through 13. That's where if you get in trouble down on the trail, that's where EMS can come in and access the trail, so. I'm in the past, Roger's been weed eating. Currently our weed eater is broken, so we wanted to see if we could get new weed eaters or get the ones fixed. So we have a lot of points to go over, so if you have any questions, just stop me. So weed eating the trail and mowing is, can we have the maintenance? We know we have a maintenance department, can we get help from them to come down and help us? In the past, it's just been a, Roger has a push motor that people have donated to him that he takes down the trail. But that's becoming harder for him to do, especially as it keeps breaking and keeping up on repairs, so can we get maybe a riding motor, mower, someone from maintenance to go down there? Another issue we wanted to bring up was trees like to fall on the trail. There's a lot of old trees that fall on the trail and they will block the trail. One from just over the summer was we had a tree that fell and sat there for two months. Now we've talked, we called the city and told them about it, but no, they sent some people to look at it, but no one came to get rid of the tree, so it blocked the trail for two months. So Roger and I took, got three hours with the sawzall. So maybe we could make an arrangement where maybe me and Roger can either use the saw, a chainsaw, or we can get someone down with a chainsaw. And so those are like the three points of maintaining the trail is mowing the grass, keeping the, weed whacking the honeysuckle and the weeds and keeping trails, keeping the trees off the trail.
Okay, these are all good points. Is that something, Mr. Eggleston, that you wanted to address or maybe there could be a meeting?
Yeah.
To discuss this with staff or?
What we've had is with Roger is that we've told him at least the first Wednesday of the month, he should come in, talk to us, present his plans before he does any work.
Okay.
The problem with Roger is Roger does what Roger wants. And lately Roger's dug out the trail, which he shouldn't have done, which he did. The tree that fell, our tree crew could not handle it, we had to call in the electric crews with bigger saws to do it, but Roger wants things now. So we, we've gotten this from Roger and he and I have to have some more discussion. But, yeah, we love him, he's a great trail, he really is, but Roger needs to. We get, we get complaints consistency because sometimes he goes a little overboard. So we do, he's been doing the weed whacking for us, I know Tony and them have been trying to, to look at how we're going to do this. We've tried something, I think we had wood rails for chips, we're thinking that was wrong, we should just get rid of those, then you can get them over and down if you need or something. So it's, it's kind of evolving all the time, but sometimes Roger doesn't quite wait for us. So it's great, it's a list we're, we're aware of and it could do.
Roger's a little stubborn.
Yes, he is.
So, see, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And I've worked with him a little bit, so maybe we could include where I come to the meetings as well.
That would probably help, but maybe you can give him guidance a little bit. Hold the reins on Roger.
Roger's a little, he's a little wild.
Well, we had some people that did complain about, if you go on 571, it was maybe clearing where the transmission lines are. And they think Roger did that, well, he didn't, that was ADS, they cleared that because of the transmission lines. So he got blamed for something he really didn't do, but sometimes he does get a little carried away. But he's, he's, God bless him, trying to do a good job, but we tried to get that and I think Roger's forgotten a little bit. So again, the offer is if you want to bring Roger in the first Wednesday of the month to talk.
First Wednesday of the month?
Yep, we can do that.
Is that entire path all the way up and to?
It goes all the way to the pond, 571.
Does it connect to Chamberlain Pond?
That's the pond, yeah. Yep.
But some of that is counting on us. So, I mean, some connections in there, it's hard to decipher who, what, where and why, but he's, I mean, we did a great job the first time, I mean, going through there and clearing it out. And again, he's correct, all the spider bites Roger got us up, but he, he kept at it and the beauty is there was some illicit things going on there that now have been curtailed. So I think it's, it's been a great improvement, but to have it walk it, obviously, it is a great trail to walk.
Roger's done the hard part of tearing out the trail, so he just needs help now keeping it maintained for the future.
So, thank you.
Well, I'm going to have to check this out because I really am not familiar with what you're presenting, but thank you for what you're, your time, you're dedicating to this and your interest in it. And I know it sounds like you guys have an avenue to get some of this stuff taken care of.
Yep, thank you.
So we appreciate you being here. It was a long meeting tonight, so thank you for your patience with that also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make from citizens? Okay, hearing none, are there any comments from council members? Mr. Segal, Mr. Schwab, Mr. Enslin?
Nothing more, thank you.
Ms. Pender, Mr. Liddy, Mary McFarland?
Oh, yeah.
Just one.
Hi, Mike.
Is that Joe Gibson down there?
I, I along with several other council members attended the groundbreaking hour for the new wastewater building on the 28th of June. I also attended the CIC meeting on the 11th of July. For the first time ever, I actually went to the park to see the fireworks this year. Took my wife down there, parked by the food trucks, had a great time. It took twice as long to get out of there as the length of the fireworks show, but everybody was considerate, nobody, nobody shoved anything around. The police department did a great job exiting people out, compliments to your department for that. Everybody pretty much.